All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, March 15th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't have any announcements, and there is no one here for anything that's not currently on our agenda, so I can go right into our first agenda item, which is the review zoning bylaw amendments and adoption for town meeting. For the town meeting warrant, community development director will be presenting and possible votes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Matthew Benoit, Director of Community Development, Mayor Douglas. Point of order question, if you don't mind. I have four proposed bylaws for you. Would you like to take these one at a time or all at once?
Go all at once. Oh, wait, nah, let's do one at a time.
Yeah, remove the ability if we have a problem.
Yeah, we'll go one at a time.
Okay. We'll start with our new bylaw, Section 6.8, is a solar bylaw. The Town of Douglas, of course, we do not have regulations for solar. We do have zoning for certain types of arrays, residentially scaled and commercial scales, and we've narrowed them down to zones, but we don't have the particulars relating to solar when it comes to decommissioning, applicability, covenants, bonds, site control, operation and maintenance, landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. What I did hear with this many-page bylaw is there are two templates that I pulled from here. One is from the state. This was issued in 2014, gave us general guidelines across the Commonwealth for solar bylaws. This particular adaptation of it is something I worked on in the Town of Auburn for a substantially long time, kind of fine-tuned the corners of these things based on some solar developments that had come in and been problematic. Like to, if the board has gone over this already, it is a lengthy bylaw. Ultimately, the goal here is to regulate these projects moving forward with a finer-toothed comb than we currently have now. What we're looking for this evening, per Mass General law, Chapter 48, Section 5, is the board's vote for the planning board to hold a public hearing in accordance with that section of law. Happy to answer any questions about the bylaw until that time. Do you have any questions?
Oh, I do. Has any of these bylaw changes gone before town council?
Great question. Mr. Fitzpatrick through the chair. These would go to town council pending the select board's vote prior to coming to the planning board's vote.
No, that's not one of my questions. Have they put their eyes on any of these prior to us voting?
No, sir.
I would appreciate that. I would think that it would, for us to vote on it, the, he's doing the bylaw, and the solar one right now, in the list of things, just in the one with the height requirements? Oh, the wording factors. Okay. And that would be caught if we had town council. We're using them to defend us on when we, on our zoning approvals or denials, whatever it is that were, that comes before the zoning law. We should at least give them the courtesy to put their eyes on these things and have some input into it, especially before you get in front of the public to stop presenting it. That's just my thought.
Matt, would we have time to hold this, have council review it, and still be able to make town meeting with it?
Well, that depends now, doesn't it, on how fast council gets to it?
If you treated it, utmost sense of urgency.
Well, I should think it's March 14th. Town meeting is May 2nd. They have a couple of weeks, but when's the planning board ask the other question?
Depending on when this recommendation comes. The select board has to make a recommendation on this in 14 days upon receipt of the letter. This letter being received on March 11th. That's why I planned it for this hearing, but the planning board meeting would be April 14th.
So, just for clarity, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Administrator, the, obviously, this one's going to be removed, the regulation for the moratorium on marijuana, the site plan review one, is it looks like you're just going to go with 10 copies instead of five. That's pretty straightforward. The wording on the height requirements has to be corrected. This stuff here, I would, this is more important to me for him to look at, to make sure that we're in unison as far as the opinions of what it's supposed to be. I appreciate all the work that you've done before and everything, but...
That does strike to the core question always. Council looks at it, is it reviewing it before or is it legislated in that way?
I don't know if legislating is the right term. I think Mike brings up a good point. I mean, I don't think it's our job to review these for legality or anything like that. I think it's our job to review them, what's right for the town isn't the right thing to do. And if there's any wording in there, as Mike implied, and if there's any wording in there that might cause us a problem down the road in any kind of court action, I would certainly defer it to town council's vast experience in picking that out. I just, I think I've kind of assumed that anything that gets up here has already been vetted at some point.
Yeah.
And that's my concern.
It makes it valid.
It hasn't been vetted somewhat. It doesn't have to be entirely, but at least have the courtesy to look at it. I'm not disputing whether this is good or bad. I don't know enough about it to even comment either way, and I wouldn't be comfortable without any advice from town council as to whether or not we should be adjusting it or letting it go through the process.
Yeah, and I mean, as we're, as we'd asked, we're going through them one at a time. So we know, the first one regarding the solar panels, we want them to review. So would it make sense to let them go through the other ones one by one?
Well, yeah, no, in perfect sense, it's just, you asked if I had any questions, I would, instead of repeating myself four times, it's easy to just put it out there and then we can just go through.
And I know that, we could have done them all.
That's right.
All right.
Just want to continue going through them one at a time. But I don't know how you're going to vote on them if you haven't had someone vetted out, that's all.
All right.
But can we have a placeholder on it, Mr. Administrator? Yeah, so if town council, this has come up quite a few times in conversations over the last year that I've been involved in this. If this becomes an issue with them, this is something we should seriously have a conversation with them or interview, for lack of a better description.
So I think it makes sense that we just, you know, we put a placeholder on these. We table this, get these off the town council, have them read, give a review, issue his opinion, and then bring it back in front of us, and the essence of saving everybody time. Anybody disagree with that thought?
We can move ahead on the other ones.
Well, I think the, to Mike's question, I don't think council's had a chance to look at any of the proposed bylaw changes as...
Two were very simple, Hal. Sorry. Two were very simple as far as the removing the moratorium on the marijuana, that's pretty straightforward. The site plan review, he wants to go from five copies to 10 copies, that's pretty simple. The wording in the height is reversed, it just has to be edited. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. He has the average height, five feet out, five and 10 feet, doesn't matter which one it is.
I agree, I think we should just go ahead on the end of the three and hold on the solar.
Okay. We all got a consensus?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I address that?
You sure can.
Thank you. And with all due respect to the board, I find sound reasoning in what you're saying. The trouble we have is timeline. The timeline being, according to 48, Section 5, the board has 14 days to act on this letter. If they do not act within 14 days, this and bylaw will not make it to the town meeting floor. So part of my reasoning here, having knocked on a council yet, is typically, in my experience with zoning bylaws, the board would typically recommend these for consideration at planning board hearing, send it out to council in advance of that hearing, and that gives, there's going to be corrections from council, there's going to be corrections at the public hearing, whether it's the board or citizen feedback. So corrections are always anticipated. So just in my experience, having done this, it typically goes from the selectman they recommended to council at that point. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Town of Douglas, you guys operate the way you do, and I completely respect and understand that. And it's just, my concerns are the timing based on the 14 days to respond, and if we do wait at this time, there would only be one public hearing on April 28th, which is only four days prior to town meeting.
Why can't they run concurrent?
Exactly. I think the issue with the board recommend.
Absolutely.
You know, it is typical that the bylaw change is presented to you and you immediately refer it to the board. In doing so, you can require that when they have their public hearing, that it be, have been vetted by council, and that council's feedback be put on the record at the planning board hearing.
Correct.
To be blunt, I have no use for council on these things, because they're going to say it's good as form. If there's something that's like wildly violative of the Dover Amendment or some other thing, they'd pick it out. But this is, this was, is this the bylaw in Auburn, so it's on the books, it's been approved by the Attorney General?
Yes, with...
To be on the books in Auburn, so...
Through the chair, yes, with mild changes just to adapt to the Town of Douglas's regulation.
Right.
That was my, kind of my point about what do we want council to do? They will be with the form, they're not going, he or she, or maybe even going to recommend...
The feedback I'm interested in is the solar industry.
Yeah, right.
Because I don't know how the solar industry reacted, Mr. Chairman, in Auburn. That's the feedback I want to hear, because I think we still want to have an open door to solar development. I think the issues that we're trying to tackle here, and I appreciate community development director taking a swing at it, is the kind of runoff that we got at the Wallow Lake, as of yet not entirely finished facility, right? And we had residents of the Town of Douglas out there, basements flooded and streets walked out. We're attempting to, I think, I see some things in here, stormwater plan to sweep is in here, so those kinds of things are being tightened up, and that's a response to things that have actually happened in town. So I don't know that we want to grind the wheels of progress completely to a halt, but in referring it, you can, I think you can set up the conditions that we want them to answer.
Just a question, how long ago did you do this bylaw in Auburn?
Ah, jeez, I did this in 2018.
Okay. Has the laws changed in the zone, solar, solar requirements since 2018?
It's a great question. And through the chair, there's one item that I'm anticipating will have to be amended because of a pending court case this month, and that's City of Waltham, Supreme Justice Court case may change some of the things with the solar bylaw. My anticipation here was to try to get out in front of it, depending on the results of that case. That's the one item I anticipate changing. I have vetted this with Heidi Ritchie, who is a great resource for solar across the Commonwealth. And I did put this in front of her, and that was her comment, just regarding that particular court case. So a majority of the changes, it's mostly some of the things that have changed are the incentive programs with solar, not necessarily the regulations.
So, Mike, we...
Look, let's get something straight. I'm not trying to stop nothing, I'm not trying to obstruct anything, I'm not trying to be difficult about it, I'm trying to work in unison. If we hire in a town council as a professional to work in our best interest and protect us, it's only a common courtesy to at least give them the chance. And listening to what you just explained, you handed it off to another solar professional that's well regarded in the industry to vet it out, you could have done it simultaneously. I'm not trying to, I'm just, just putting it out there, so don't take offense to what I'm saying. It's just to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So if I understood Matt properly, we're not voting on something, we're referring it to the, yeah.
Yes, sir.
We were referring it to the planning board, and we could put in there that we would like to see it go before a town council. I don't have a problem with that.
That's what I was just about to ask.
Yeah, but I don't have a problem with that. When I see little typos and stuff like that, another pair of eyes, whether it's Matt, he doesn't have time for it, but another pair of eyes to look at it, just to pick up something. I'm reading this thing, and I'm like, I handed it to Matt before he came in, I said, I've already read this thing twelve times, can you read this thing to me? I had it at the end of the page, it was just reversed, because it's contradicting itself. Like, he says, no, what they're trying to say is it's got to be a minimum of six feet out of the ground, no more than 12 feet, but it's worded the opposite way.
I see.
So it's a minor thing, but that just reaffirms why I think that council should be put into it, because you're putting them at a disadvantage to go and do things to get this over the end, that's all.
I think on a go-forward basis, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that you should alter your process to do that. This one time, I think if you refer to those structures, I think you answered the issue.
If you wanted a suggestion for zoning changes, you should seriously look at stormwater management as a whole, not just solar bylaw, because you've had problems with the residential property that's right down where that other situation happened, that if they have a stormwater management, then maybe the old lady's house might float away.
Through the chair, Mr. Fitzpatrick. I am working on MS4 stormwater regulations, let's just warn ready for this town meeting. Again, I appreciate your comments with regards to the height. All of these bylaws did go before the planning board for comment, I did not receive comment back from members, but it was a process typically, so.
Why I would have picked up on something like that, and that's why I've had conversations with Kenon and Passlin, that's where you first brought it up, about full point. I deal with this on a regular basis, just in what I can for work, so if it's something in the technical section, Kevin's all over it. If it's a legal thing, then David's all over it. Sorry, Tim, I don't know.
If it's a real planning thing, I'm all over it.
Yeah, so if it's something with CRMPC, this is our go-to expert, but...
People stay tuned, later on tonight I have a major announcement.
Oh, nice, nice.
Oh, a teaser.
You can't do that. Oh, yes. So the people at home, like, don't get up and go to the bathroom, you never know when Tim's going to jump in. Forever edged into the internet.
But his motivation to do this is to close holes that we have in the system, and I have the same motivation.
Okay.
So that's all of this.
So, long story short, if, once we get through the rest of these, as long as we send these down with the, you know, say, we're referring down to you, you know, we'd ask that it go to town council for review prior to?
Yep. We actually already went through the other ones, just in my explanation at the beginning, but that's fine.
All right.
That's all I do on that.
We can go back a few. Do you have any other comment on this?
No, sir. I think these are great questions. I think, I believe, yeah, as Mr. Fitzpatrick mentioned, these are to correct some minor holes. There are some other larger ones we're working on that just wouldn't be ready for town meeting this spring. So the site plan review item under Section 942 didn't have language in it for holding a public hearing in accordance with Mass General law. That was a big problem. The height description comes from the building commissioner, and, because he's tackling that with builders. The moratorium was a simple removal to something that's been expired for four years from the solar bylaws. Mr. Woodrick pointed out, it's based on runoff issue that happened throughout town.
All right. So if we were to take action on this, it would just be a motion from us to send this over to the planning board with the recommendation or request of shooting it across town council first. Is that about the gist of it?
So.
Anybody care to make said motion?
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye. Davis, aye.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you.
Just sort of recommend, I do appreciate your work on it.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'll bet this out to council right away.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you kindly.
All right. Discuss EV charging stations rates and possible votes. Did you not have anything in my pack that we're getting?
I know there was.
Has someone been used today?
He did. It was not by me.
Has someone been used today? Mr. Chairman, if I may, recommend a brief explanation and then pass it over to the side. I think I've already set this on the record, but I'll say it again. We just want to recoup the cost of having it there. We don't want to make money, we don't want to subsidize individual households with taxpayer costs. The town's electricity rate we pay as a municipality is substantially lower than what people are paying at home. It's a combination of our purchasing strategy, but also the fact that the town gets the credit from the solar power down the street. So we get a 20% credit against our electricity bill, so we can offer that reduced cost electricity to people who charge their car at stations, and still not lose money. Lisa was working on pulling our most recent bills and talking to our rep from National Grid on, first of all, whether it's lawful for certain charges on the electric bill to be passed through one entity to another, to a customer, and Lisa's been out sick, so we have to finish that work. So we can just pass over it and take it up again in two weeks. It's another two weeks of charging for free. If you have electric car, rent it down off, it is free at the moment. That's okay, we need, we still, we need people to know that it's here. We're going to add signs as well. We're going to have a sign in front of town hall and at least one down the main street, and then probably closer to the highway. When you get to the end of your charge, it's like being running out of gas, right? You need to find a place, and there's just not that many.
Is there any considerations for future maintenance of these things?
Yeah. So we have an annual budget now, because we're paying a software license fee to utilize the software, and it's not so large as that we want to build that in, although that will be part of our conversation in two weeks, whether that should be put into the electric charge. I would have been told when we signed the grant application, was awarded the grant, that we could utilize information on people's payment card to distinguish Douglas residents or non-residents. And when I started to set up the account, I didn't see, it wasn't obvious to me how I would do that, so I want to work that out as well. Because I would, if somebody's coming from out of town, I would just assume charge from market rate, catch up a little bit, let the residents have the subsidy. So that's the thought process for when I'm ready to make it.
All right. Well, that was easy. So next agenda item is to review revised movie contract for Soldier's Field and possible votes. Have you gotten a cameo on that anthem?
If not, no, I have, I saw one.
Have you found out what the rating is on it?
Yes, that's a good question. You did ask, and it was, he thought PG, maybe because of some dugout language, you know, PG-13, but Hal's greatest concern will not be realized that this...
Look, do you feel better now?
He's intently listening.
He is. PG-13, is that acceptable to you?
I was, yeah, I was, I was concerned.
I know, and I strike out, I say things like, oh, gosh darn it.
Right, yeah.
Fooey.
Golly gee.
I'll try again, I'll do better next time.
I'll do better next time, coach.
And all the edits have been approved by Rich Vaughn per email.
I have not heard any negative feedback from anyone that has involved operation.
Please, will I get hit, you know, out of left field?
Oh, no, no, no. You're going to throw a bad...
I run the first base with it? We're just trying to field the question.
Feel free to go home.
I hear that, we're pointing errors.
I knew I could, it's fine.
It's a home run for the town.
We're back on the scoreboard, Dave.
Hey, let's take a vote on it, shall we? Anybody want to make a motion?
Folks at home, this was not a practice.
I offer apologies on behalf of the board.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we execute the revised movie contracts.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Anybody want to do the wave after this, or give it that stadium feel? All right. So the next is to review and discuss the intermunicipal agreement with Oxbridge for water services and possible vote.
Mr. Chairman, it isn't my intent to declare some negotiating strategy and televise the public meeting. What I'm looking for is authorization from the board to approach the Town of Oxbridge for an amendment to our existing agreement. The agreement was in your packet, and hopefully you had a quick overview of it, it's a brief agreement. It is definitely customary to have a formal written agreement when water service is extended to customers in another town that has a water department but was not able to bring their service. And so when the Shell station was built, the select board in Douglas at the time...
I'm looking at those names.
Yeah, getting to those names, those folks saw fit to sign an agreement with the Town of Oxbridge that, my understanding is that the Town of Oxbridge is under a great deal of time pressure to get this done, and it doesn't appear that they pushed back on any of these terms. The situation that we have now is we are extending water service from the Shell station to the new development. New development is mostly in Oxbridge and Sutton, so the Town of Douglas is bearing the expense of providing utilities for water and wastewater to a building that will not pay real estate or personal property taxes to the Town of Douglas. It will, but it's a 8% of the building, and we're only getting a small amount of building from it. But we, therefore, we want to be sure that we get the revenues for the services provided. And just to remind the Town of Oxbridge, that under their existing agreement with us, they are responsible for fixing the pipe if anything happens to it, because it is their town. So I think it's better to have this formally taken care of than to wait for something to happen and try to figure out what happened to it.
Council prevention versus a county care.
So if, I actually think it would be good if a member of the board were involved in this, along with Mr. Sullivan and myself, who can approach my colleague in Oxbridge and try to work out some language.
Would you care to partake in that, Mr. Fitzpatrick? You have industry knowledge.
If the administrator feels that I would be a benefit to it, I would, yeah.
We have to remember the slide board, because it is your, not the commissioner's, generally.
Well, you know what you're looking for, you know my background, so that helps you.
Does anyone recognize that last signature?
No.
Interesting.
I couldn't even divine a guess as to who it is.
Wouldn't that be Bob? David Ferneau was on for one term, correct?
Shirley Fall, Ed Emers, David.
All that guy.
Squids. All right, now moving forward, I endorse the idea of Mike working with Matt, talk to our friends in Oxbridge for a agreement related to water service.
Answered.
Answered.
That sounded like a fine motion. Anybody care to second that?
I'll go second.
I have problems with the sound, can I, if you could use the mics maybe?
Oh, okay.
You missed a very eloquent motion by Kevin.
I'll do it again, Hal.
The agreement, what you were saying. Exhumatic, since his motion is going to be correct.
Rhythmic. Make a motion that we endorse the idea of Mike working with Matt to talk to our friends in Oxbridge regarding an upgraded water and sewer agreement.
And I second that flowing motion.
You did the same almost verbatim twice, that's impressive.
Need to be authorized to enter into that agreement, or is that?
It's going to come back here.
All right, so the motion has been made and seconded, and did you hear it well on that one, Hal?
I did, I did.
Tim did serious justice to it, too. He was verbatim, exact same motion twice.
That was Shakespearean.
Seagull's wings need a little touch up on that.
Yeah, if you could touch up the seagull's wings on the painting behind you.
Okay, by the next meeting.
So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone of the night.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye. Davis, aye.
Excellent. All right, next is to close the warrant and possible votes. Not much to discuss on that. We're going to make a motion to close the warrant.
I move that we close the warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just a question from Matt, I know we bumped this up and it's been relatively successful, are we hearing issues from staff in any way, shape, or form?
I think we're in good shape. But this is where, I'll put my technical hat on for a second, you have two warrants, you have a special town meeting warrant and an annual town meeting warrant. You can use the same motion for both, but close them both.
Good point.
I amend my motion to close both specials, the annual and the annual. Does that work?
I will second the amendment motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion now? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone of the night.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye. Davis, aye.
Okay, approve minutes and possible votes. I'll make a motion that we approve the Tuesday, February 15, 2022 minutes.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone of the night, Stain.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye. Davis, aye.
I would move that we approve the executive session of March, I mean, March 1st.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone of the night.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye. Davis, aye.
Your report, sir. Mr. Chairman, in order to obviate the need for any executive session, since there was only one item that we needed to take up anyway, that was litigation, I think it's appropriate at this point to have this discussion in public session. There's been a lot of litigation across the country filed in different courts by different levels of government against opioid manufacturers, distributors. I think some of the cases actually name providers that prescribe the medication. And some time ago, the town of Douglas filed its own municipal action, joined that litigation on the advice of council and local council really deferring to a national law firm that was coordinating the cases. It is inappropriate to say that this was a class action lawsuit, it was not. They were all individual cases. The individual plaintiffs joined together in a negotiating class, and were represented by the same council. Just a little bit different. Each individual case continued to proceed through litigation process, but all of the plaintiffs were acting together and being represented by one group of council. And it got complicated, I think people who were following the issue are aware that several of the major manufacturers declared bankruptcy. I shouldn't say several, the two biggest entities, two of the biggest entities. And some of those lawsuits, people were trying to reach the privately held firm, they're trying to reach the ownership individually, hold them personally liable. So you've got cases that are, you know, your classic product liability theories, and you've got bankruptcy, being representative of bankruptcy. For better or for worse, the attorney, attorneys general of several states were very aggressive in pursuing their cases, and that includes Massachusetts. And Massachusetts Attorney General has eventually really corralled all of the Massachusetts municipalities into her settlement framework. And it was necessary for her settlement agreement to reach critical mass, in other words, to get enough of the municipalities that were participating in Massachusetts to join her settlement in order for her settlement to take effect. And so there was protracted negotiation between our council and the Attorney General of Massachusetts to alter the terms of the settlement she had reached and to increase the share of funds that would be allocated to the municipalities. She had it in the 30s, we wanted it in the 40s. The settlement, the final agreement is 40%, 40% of those proceeds received by the Commonwealth, we distributed to the municipalities on an allocation formula that is still not, I haven't read it, I'm sure it's in the voluminous documents we've gotten. But I don't think it's materially changed our position. We will get funds, the funds will be targeted towards prevention and treatment of opioid addiction. It's not a slush fund, it's a targeted fund to deal with the damage that opioid addiction is causing. So when we have that final settlement amount, you know, we'll make that public. But in terms of the settlement documents, they've been signed. These things have a way of, a lot of times what we get in the correspondence is, if you don't sign it by date X, we're going to assume that you did. So that's, we just sign it to stay proactive with it. So that, that was our only executive session discussion of litigation. But with signing the settlement documents, our case will be dismissed, and it will no longer be litigation. Do you want to thank the department heads that a couple of years ago now pulled together all of our IMC data and a lot of our case history with opioids? We added to it over time because we've had people pass away from overdoses. Status of the budget, the Finance Committee continues to work through the individual departments.
Mr. Chairman, just a question on the opioid.
Sure.
Are the participants in the settlement also going to work together on the use of the funds in any collaborative way?
So regionalization and collaboration is highly encouraged, but not required.
Might be some economies of scale, obviously.
Clearly, there will be for our, especially for Southern Western County, if we can, we'll see how we can work with neighboring communities. On the status of the budget, FinCom has been meeting, the meetings have gone well, there's been a lot of really good questions asked. We are asking those questions in public at Finance Committee meetings and incorporating some of the answers into our thought process. But we have not yet heard from all the departments, we haven't heard from fire, in particular, fire and ambulance, and that's one of our bigger pieces. So I continue to work on this and push forward a couple of ideas, and by way of status, I have to say that with the passage of time, it's hard to keep track of who I've told what. In summary, in the past couple of years, we've had some catching up to do on the municipal side, we had some salaries that had lagged, we had some expense items that had lagged, and we were trying to find, trying to use resources from the levy to fill in those holes and catch us up. And on the education side, because BBT was growing so aggressively, a lot of the money that was being allocated to education was, was going to BBT. And so we kind of, if you look at the municipality versus the school department, the municipality was growing its budget at 2-plus percent a year, and the education side was just about 2-plus percent a year. But we were holding them back a little bit in order to get the resources we needed to do what we need to do on the town side. This year, as I go through it, a number of things have happened. So our health insurance renewal is a 0% increase. That frees up a tremendous amount of resources. We are being hit by fairly large fuel cost increases, and we're going to build those into the budget. We have a property and casualty premium that will go up fairly substantially. But compared to the revenue picture of the town, and some of the staff turnover here, where we've had a lot of people at the top step retire, can be replaced by people at a lower step. As we sit here tonight, this could change, but as we sit here tonight, the municipal side of the budget is only going to go up by half a percent, based on what I have so far. But on the school side, we have a very large increase in Norfolk Aggie tuition, basically a 0% increase from BBT and a very, very large increase in school transportation costs to the tune of over $450,000. And that is what is putting pressure on the budget. When all is said and done, I don't think I'm going to hold to the half a percent for the town side. I've been trying to think my way through fixing the personnel compensation system. I haven't had anything to show the personnel board to this point, because I'm not finished yet. I'm not going to show them a half product. Part of the issue for me is sizing the the movement in the table. If it's too expensive to do in one year, I'd like to recommend that we do it across two. And I'm not there yet, I don't know what that's going to look like. I'm still conducting some research into the salaries of some of our department heads in similar communities in order to get some benchmarks to inform that conversation. But as far as I'm concerned, bringing the budget into balance should not be a difficult exercise. And what we will probably find ourselves discussing is the proper way to fund, or the Finance Director's recommendation for how to fund some expenses that are eligible for funding as a one-time revenue, you know, a special revenue account. Or a special article, right? And that is driven in some part by the way new revenues are being garnered. When you have large economic development projects, you have one really difficult year, the year that we're planning right now, fiscal '23. Because you look at it and you say, there's a huge amount of money coming in that is above and beyond what we typically anticipate. In this case, for building permits. So the building permit revenue alone on the large warehouses to be built entirely within the town of Douglas could approach a million dollars. But until that building is actually built and is assessed by the assessors and becomes part of the tax base, you can't build your operating budget around that stream of revenue being permanent. So what we're talking about with Gene is, well, if we're going to have a huge explosion in the workload in the building inspection office and they need a vehicle to get from here to there, the time to do it is when the building permit revenue comes in, it's a one-time revenue, one-time expense for the purchase of the item. And you anticipate that the next year, the new growth number and the tax base of the town will grow because the building will have been built and put, joined the tax rolls. So that's the path forward, if we just have this one year where we feel like we should have more resources, then we do, because we know what's coming. The reality is, the levy is the levy, we can only spend what we can raise from our revenue sources. So that's, that's where we are with the budget. In the ongoing pattern of Mr. Manerick producing rabbits out of thin air, it was his feeling that we had not been treated fairly by MassWorks because last year, MassWorks was willing to provide money to the town of Sutton for the expansion of natural gas in their community. And when we asked for natural gas, we were told that they didn't want to do that, and they told us, take natural gas completely out of your application, which we did, because we wanted a viable application. And they awarded us $3 million, which is good enough on its own, right? But Bob wasn't going to take no for an answer and continued to pursue an answer to the question, why did you provide Sutton with those funds and you're not going to provide them to Douglas? And I don't think Sutton's the only town, I think there's other entities. So through the course of conversation, it became apparent that state decision makers did not realize that the gas company had built a large and very expensive step-down facility in Sutton to extend gas to this area. So they were coming at this with a bias that they were paying for pipe for natural gas to be expanded at the benefit of a private company, and the private company had no skin in the game. The private company, in fact, had spent somewhere between $8 and $10 million building a step-down gate in order to be able to service this market. When all of that got cleared up, and I don't expect people in the Glass Building of Boston to know what's going on back road in Sutton. When that became apparent, the conversation changed significantly. And so the, long story short, is that this weekend, the state of Massachusetts agreed to amend our MassWorks grant award from $3 million to $4 million. So we have $700,000 in dedicated resources that have to be used to extend natural gas service through our project area and up Gilboa. And $300,000 that they put into this, quote unquote, for cost overruns, because they understand that we're up against supply chain constraints. So we have, may have to pay a premium for some of the pipe. So that's very good work by Mr. Manerick, I appreciate his stick-to-it-iveness. For my part, I hope that there's some continuity between administrations, the general election notwithstanding. Because there's a lot of institutional knowledge in Economic Development Office. And I don't want to have to educate a whole group of people who, they know what we've got going on here. It's a little bit of a shorthand for them to stick around. We have many, are there any questions about that economic development stuff? So what I've tasked that team to do is to begin to build a communications plan for the public, because I want people to understand. the public, because I want people to understand, the timeline is, what road's going to be ripped up when, how many lanes will be closed, how are we going about this? Because I'm not even sure the public is fully comfortable or fluent with the idea that there are two different warehouses, and that one has already been approved by the three towns, and that work in connecting them to utilities is going to stop, because it's done. They're out there building this thing, they're going to stop pouring concrete at the end of March, and it's going to be not a 24/7 operation, but hours are going to be extended deep into the night so that they can get this thing built on time. So there will be water main work on the Douglas site that's necessary in order to get construction water and necessary flow and pressure to that site, and that's going forward no matter what. The other warehouse that's entirely within Douglas is still in the permitting process, they just presented to the planning board the other night. So I would, and they've been before ConCon. If members of the public are really interested in this, I would ask them that they engage, because these are public hearings, that's where your questions will be answered, and you can find out more by asking questions. To that end, we've been trying to procure, using MassWorks funds, any number of items. We run into some difficulty, iron pipe, ductile iron pipe is very difficult to come by. Lightning struck us again, we appeared to have found a partner that can work with our existing, the partner that, the vendor that won the bid is willing to work with someone who just happens to have a whole bunch of pipe in their yard, to solve our problem of getting all the pipe here by June. What people will see, and I'm still investigating the ins and outs of this, but we want to stage the resources close to the job, we don't want to have to drag it all around town, so we may be staging this at the parking lot at the Gilboa Street Mill, we'll need some temporary fencing, we're going to need some, some security there. But people will begin to see it's going to change what they see when they drive down the street, they'll see a sizable pile of pipe, it's about half a mile running.
Matt, is it exactly the same type of pipe we would use, or are we?
Yeah, so we did not have to substitute, we did contemplate, because iron was so hard to get, we contemplated working with an approved grade of plastic. Couple of things. One is, the market's savvy to that already, so the, the cost of a plastic pipe came up to almost equal the iron pipe, because it's been bid up. The concerning thing about it is that it's not just the pipe, you have to change the fittings as well, and so you're basically, would have to rebid the whole thing, you're not saving any money, you're losing some time. The lead times are much more manageable than iron, but then you're, you're creating this water system that's mostly iron, and then you're adding plastic to it. The fabrication's different, and there's a, I don't want to get into a whole lot of this, but what concerns me the most is that plastic pipe acoustically is different than metal pipe. So they use different devices to find a leak when metal pipe is leaking, and it's very efficient, you find a leak pretty quickly, and you go right at it and you fix it. Plastic pipe doesn't play nice, so you can search for a leak for a really long time and bleed out a lot of water. So it's, if you can avoid using it, you should try to, so we eventually opted not to try to substitute the product.
Good.
We do have a low bidder for the gym windows project, we have a low bidder for the library ceilings project, both of those bids are well under the budget that was provided by town meetings, so we should be proceeding with that this spring, and see some of those projects start to take fruition. Are there any questions about any procurements that you're aware of?
If we could go back to the pipe, did you say, Matt, that the other cooperating bidder has the iron pipe, and we will be able to use iron?
Yeah, so it's all going to be iron, and one vendor has everything we need right away, and the other vendor has everything else that we needed. So I'm going to put the two of them together and hope that they play nice, declaring victory a little bit. Right, so it's still going to be sourced through the low bidder, and he has the contract, but we found a place for him to get it for us. Oh, hell.
Power as installation of the pipe benefits Sutton, is there any provision, we're going to have maybe police overtime supervising traffic, et cetera, or any costs associated with that, is the town going to be able to take that up somehow, build it into the project?
All of the above, Sleckman. Mr. Chairman, so to answer Sleckman Davis's question, there'd be a lot of detailed work required from these projects, too much, in fact. The local PDs, we can't stop, there isn't enough. So we're going to use a blend of a couple of ideas. The contractor who installs the pipe will be required, as a term of the contract, to purchase these portable traffic lights that you've seen here. Locally, if you drive around North Smithfield, they're fixing a bridge right now, and they're using these things, so the Jersey barriers close off the lane, and then where they're working, and then the one travel lane is governed by these lights. At the end of our project, those lights will be given to the town of Douglas, we'll have them go, go-forward basis, because we're going to be doing quite a bit of roadwork. So that's how that's going to be handled. There will be places in the project where those lights will not do the trick, but we'll need police officers, so we're going to target that for detail. Details will be in the bid document, Hal, so it's going to be part of the cost of the project that they'll be bidding. As you know, we get an admin fee for running that.
You don't have to cover the bases, but...
It's a huge part of the, it's a really big part. So it's really, and the contract is interested by the lights, because they're going to save a whole load of money.
Hal tried to drag us back into baseball rings.
I had the green light, did you have the green light? I thought I had the green light.
I missed the sign.
You missed the sign.
All right, we're going sideways again.
You started it.
Anything else?
That's my report tonight, I could go on and on, but I think that's it.
Excellent. So, as I heard Tim's got an exciting announcement, I would assume it would fall under open session topics, not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting.
Close enough, and I do regret teasing all the townspeople to stick around, but Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization, Matt, a meeting probably two, three months ago indicated that there was a vacancy on that very important planning commission. I kind of took a peek at it and thought that it might be worth exploring. I had a meeting with C M P P O the other day, and I was acclimated to the alternate position. So Sutton is the lead, we would be in the alternate position, but this particular organization is, runs out of C M, my friends at C M R P C, they, I believe, control $20 to $25 million of federal transportation highway improvement funds. So we talked about some of the projects that they've done, and I don't know if anyone's been up to watch Housit Mountain, or driven up 140, the area got a little funky, but they did a project up there that was really beautiful, really very consistent with Princeton and its look and feel, and I thought it would be something that I'd want to be a part of. So I will be following Sleckman's lead out of Sutton, but Sutton Douglas has a fair amount of power right now.
Because if you are grand, who are planning?
Well, former Sleckman, former Sleckman, you said, I have a passion for planning, so here we are. There's 400 in the country, 10 in the Commonwealth, and we will have a role in one.
So the transportation...
It could be.
Well, it could be, because the Transportation Improvement Program, the so-called T E P, is, you know, it's a pretty substantial fund that the federal government puts transportation funding into, and you have to go through a merit-based selection process, but it comes in handy when you want to do a roundabout or some other streetwise improvements, and I'm saying this because my dear mentor, John H. Chafee, fought to keep the T E P program in what, a bill that was called the ICE T, way back when.
Do you think maybe that Tim could plug into getting some lights on a particular section of Route 16, because it's very dark.
Yeah.
It's very, very dark.
Well, I was hoping...
Oh, my goodness. Well, I was, I was thinking maybe Linden Street would get repaved and be about 50 feet wide.
If we're paving anything around the neighborhood, I think the folks at Fairbanks need some love.
I was thinking of actually a traffic device mounted on South West Main Street as a section of structure where the lane ran. Because this, this, I don't want to point them off against somebody that drives very rad.
Two wheels, I heard.
Yeah.
What?
Best thing ever, one two wheels, and never saw a roll.
That's true.
There's a little red button that comes out of there pretty quick, though.
But, but I, I heard the husband won't be driving that little red button.
No.
Something about, uh, aggressive.
Listen.
Access.
I'll be perfectly candid, it requires a very deep squat to get out of that car, very deep.
For sure. I've never seen tuck and roll in a husband or anything, he had a different one.
It's got it. All right.
Gymnastics is an Olympic sport.
Not for me.
For sure.
One of the two things that you won't see me do, gymnastics or run. All right, is there anything other, any other open session topics, other than just ridiculous need for a streetlight or a stop sign at the end of my street?
Not, just because you don't agree doesn't make it ridiculous.
All right.
It could be beneficial to me.
I do, actually, our sign on Main Street, not our sign, Gregory's sign, that's blinking quicker, I don't want to tell on him, but that's blinking quicker than the DOT's eight seconds.
Was it? I actually stood there today and timed it.
Yeah.
I know it sounds crazy.
Did you suffer a...
I bought lunch there, no, and it was more than eight seconds.
Was it? Okay.
And actually, if it's a broken sign, if you go back to the one we talked about, I specifically asked them what the frequency would be, and they were going to put a special up in the morning and maybe change it for dinner time, and then when he went to the planning board, he said, that the Sleckman said, that we agreed to the DOT recommendation for, whatever it was, that's not what we agreed on, but he's on the 1690 day probationary period.
Yeah, it's a new technology for him, I'm sure he's got to figure it out and figure out what to say, but...
Is he going to pledge, Tim?
Did I get a pledge, man?
Yeah.
No, I didn't either, my...
It's not double secret information. Would you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Gladly make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
It's Patrick.
Bone and I?
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye.
At least I didn't call your phone.
That's true.